Gold Beach, nature's wild side. It's become a tradition. Gold Beach Glass Float Season February 1st through April 30th. Thousands of floats are placed along the beach. Find one and it's yours to keep. Find out more at visitgoldbeach.com. Gold Beach, nature's wild side.
All right, please. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor of the City of Groveville, please.
Summer Madison, position one.
Larry Trent, position two.
Anthony Bragano, position three.
Becky Campbell, position four.
Tammy Conklin, position five.
And Coral Popoff, Mayor and City Administrator Jody Fritz, present with us as well. All right, I've got a proclamation to begin with, and therefore I better put on these glasses. This is a proclamation. Now it's all fuzzy out there. I look at you guys out here with these glasses and then I get a headache. Don't take it personally. What I mean is that they're reading glasses. All right, this is proclamation declaring March as Self-Injury Awareness Month. Whereas 2 million Americans currently engage in self-injury with methods like cutting, scratching, bruising, and hitting themselves, along with other more harmful methods. And whereas self-injury is used with individuals that are unable to handle intense feelings, and so they turn to self-injury as a way to express their feelings and emotions. And whereas self-injury can start at any age, but most people who self-injure start at puberty. And whereas self-injury ranges from 12% to 37% in adolescents, and 12 to 20% in young adult populations. And whereas the incidence of self-injury is the highest among white male adolescents. And whereas 70% of those with a history of self-injury have attempted suicide at least once. And is the highest during the first six months after an episode. And whereas those who self-injure report that once they started, it is hard to stop. And that they feel like self-injury takes up their lives. And whereas the... Oh, okay, there is a need, I'm assuming that's... There is a need to break down the common stereotypes surrounding self-injury and to educate parents and medical and educational professionals about the condition. And now, therefore, to increase awareness that self-injury is a public health issue that needs to be taken seriously. I, Coral Popoff, Mayor of the City of Gold Beach, hereby declare and proclaim the month of March 2020 is Self-Injury Awareness Month for the City of Gold Beach. Be it further resolved that the city encourages all citizens to be informed on the warning signs and address this issue with our you. Now, thank you. Clayton. Now, I don't know if it's just been me the last few months of ringing people out here, but meeting the volunteer first. Yeah? Any questions? Can I accept that?
Can I speak?
Sure. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't see on here where you wanted to speak.
Yes. Well, I always like to speak, too.
All right. Go ahead, Clay.
Thank you so much. Gordon Clay, Chairman of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, and I'm in Brookings, Oregon. Question. What are boys less likely to do than girls? Boys have been brought up to be in a culture of self-feeling. Big boys don't cry, handle it, don't ask for help, man up, and the messages go on. So when it comes to self-injury, they go numb. Why should they be concerned? Why should we be concerned? People often keep a secret, but the urge to self-injure isn't uncommon. Over 2 million Americans currently engage in self-injury. When it's the groups, the big groups are adolescents and young people, but all people of all ages self-injure. Myth, one of the misconceptions is that only females do it. While girls 14 to 17 are hospitalized four times more than boys, 30 to 40% of the people who self-injure are males, and the highest segment is being white adolescents. Self-injury means hurting yourself on purpose. For boys, the most common method is hitting themselves or an object, or the wall, or cigarette burns. The most common for girls is cutting with sharp objects, or pulling out hair, or picking at wounds to prevent healing. Myth, people who self-injure enjoy the pain or can't feel it. Actually, self-injury most often hurts. Sometimes feeling the pain is the whole point, to reconnect on their own body and just feel something. Myth, self-injury is untreatable. Although it can be difficult to control or stop, most people are able to stop at some point because it is most often used as a coping mechanism. However, the practice particularly does not stop until the individual has found methods to cope and is fully ready to stop. Myth, self-injury is a suicide attempt. Most studies find that self-injury is often undertaken as a means of avoiding suicide. What is important is to get a handle on it before the pattern becomes well-established, since 70% of those with a history of self-injury do attempt suicide at least once. Myth, there's nothing I can do. There are many ways that you can help. The easiest is by listening and being as supportive and understanding as you can. Most importantly, don't give up. Instead of scolding or looking down on someone for doing this, just let it be known that you care. I've got much information. March is Self-Injury Awareness Month, and I've got a lot of information on the website If you or someone you care about is in crisis or you think immediate action is needed, text SOS@741741, or contact your doctor, or Mental Health Crisis Services, or go to your local emergency room. On an additional note, I'd like to remind you all that the Curry County Commission Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council, we're having their second meeting, or their third meeting shortly, is still looking for a person from city government here in Port Orford or down in Brookings. And that and faith-based are the only ones of 15 categories that we're missing. And I think they're two very important parts. And it could be the mayor, a councilperson, or the city administrator. And I'd just like to leave one of these for each of you. This is the information about the post and the application, and would really like to fill that position because we've got a lot of work to do and we really want to cut down our suicide issues here in Curry County.
Thank you, sir. By any chance, this is a question. Do you have any statistics or any numbers of as far as the number of people within Curry County? I mean, I'm not talking suicide now, I'm talking self-inflicted injury.
No. This is a really tough topic. What I know is that I've talked to the therapists that work with the kids in the school, and it is a major problem here.
So...
And it's well-hidden. That's why boys don't get recorded as often because what self-injury is generally considered is cutting. And so everybody talks about cutting. Well, it's the girls who cut. And the boys pound walls, they burn themselves, that kind of thing, and nobody thinks about that. But the actual research shows that girls and boys are almost at an equal level for self-injury. And it starts at puberty. And most of it happens is before you're 24. But elders self-injure, and there is an issue in their... And it's somewhere, the national statistics is 7% of the population. And that's a lot of people that are doing this undercover and hiding it and enchain about it. If you see somebody with long sleeves when it's really warm out, or a turtleneck, that kind of thing, might just ask. You know, are you okay? And know that I'm here to help when I want to talk to them, particularly parents, because parents don't have the...
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time here.
No, you're quite welcome. All right. In the beginning, we actually have applicants for some very, very important positions within the city. I've expressed this, just how important these positions are on a planning, or an urban group committee, planning. And... What's the other one? I don't know.
Budget, budget.
Budget, thank you. And it's just a pleasure to see people that are willing to go ahead and step up to the plate at this time. So I'm going to first call upon Mr. Craig Chance, and then I'll explain the little interview-type of thing that we do, sir. Basically, what we do is that I will give you approximately three minutes or so. If you wish to elaborate more on why you would like to be here than what you've said within the application. At that time, each councilor, and I'll start with position one, and go through, and they will have an opportunity to ask you a question, or any questions that they might have. And then, of course, you'll have the opportunity to answer them. Once they get around, if I have a question or anything, then I'll ask that as well at that time. But that's basically the ground rules. And I hope I don't have to repeat that for the next person. So at any rate, the floor is yours right now, sir.
All right. My name's Craig Chance. Was born, raised in that big city of Southern California with millions of people. I'm sure there's a lot of transplants here from California. My wife and I, as we got toward retirement age, we did a two-year investigation of where we wanted to move. Nine different states, several different communities. We chose this village of Gold Beach after visiting it two times. So I have a vested interest. I bought my home this month for Avram Hall. We're going to... It's our only home. I really love this community. I want to offer what I can do to help this community, state of the village that it is, can have the best value for all the exchange issues.
All right, thank you, sir. And of course, you're going for the budget committee?
Yes.
All right. In fact, it's tonight we are going to be trying to determine the dates for the budget meeting, which should be coming up in April. So with that in mind, Council Madison, do you have anything?
Just thank you for applying and stepping up.
My pleasure.
All right. Council Brenner?
I don't. I have no questions.
All right.
Qualifications, please.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
Council Bragano?
I have no questions.
Council Campbell?
I am very glad that you're here, and I'm glad that you want to serve. And I'm going to ask you a question just because I think somebody should. It says here that you have extensive work in... Let me if I can find my question. In zoning and planning. I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about that.
That must be somebody else. Even though I have done real estate for 20 years.
That's the next person. See, I was trying to be smart.
But I haven't ever worked in a zoning or planning commission, even though I have my real estate realtor's license. I sold new homes, resold, and owned business. So I'm familiar with that. The budget committee was open, so that's why I chose to go with that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Council Popoff?
I have a similar question. Would you consider being on both committees? I say that because the planning commission is typically, what? Five or six meetings a year now?
Not many.
And the budget committee is usually one or two. So you could technically serve on both, so you think about that.
Okay, yeah, I'd be wanting to. I want to help. Like I said, this is, I'm going to die here, probably. And so I want to do whatever I can to help this place do the great village that it is.
Having negotiation skills, what you listed, is really good for both. Trying to get down to what we can, what you want to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Actually, what Council Conklin suggested was what I was thinking as well, too. Budget committee normally is one day, one night a year, at most, two. Planning and zoning, that is usually the third Monday of the month. And that's a monthly meeting. What I would suggest, if you were interested at all, sir, is to attend the budget and the budget committee, and then at that time decide whether or not that you just might like to go on and continue to be a member of our little family here on the budget, on the zoning.
Will do.
I would appreciate it. It would be great. I don't have any questions. I just want to echo what everyone else has pretty much said and thought. We just want to thank you so much that you were willing to go ahead and step up to the plate. Be honest, it's been harder and harder to find people that are willing to do so. So you being here means a great deal to us. So at this time, I'd like to go ahead and appoint you. And council, how does that sound to you?
And then I'll have the resolution for next month. And so when we talk later about the dates in April, we'll include you in that discussion so we can make sure that the dates that we... Right. ...can be covered.
So if there's nothing else... In fact, it's on the planning commission, you'd be able to work with my daughter, who bless her heart, stepped up to the bar, too. And that, quite frankly, that's an important, important committee that we have. They all are, but this one deals, month in, month out, with things that actually affect other people's lives and what have you. So it's important.
I kind of spoke there. If you were planning on staying for the meeting, if not, we can...
I'll stay.
Okay, okay. I didn't want to presume to make you stay.
I'll stay.
Yeah, we can go ahead and appoint you now.
I meant for the dates for the meeting. Because we weren't going to talk about that till later. And if you wanted to go, but if he's going to stay for the meeting, then...
Thank you.
Well, sir, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so Lisa, the planning commission, perspective one, she had a work thing and is not here, but she will be here only for the April meeting. But Linda is here, and she is prospective. URA, Mr....
Well, Linda Bush, your heart, thank you. There we are. Thank God, I knew we had three, and two of you are on the same page. All right. Did you hear everything that I...
Yes. Okay, so I decided I was going to move to Gold Beach sometime in the late 90s, and been working on it ever since then, and finally cut the ties to the Rogue Valley last May. And did it. And so I'm here. And one of the things I realized in my current position as a news reporter, and just about everybody I meet and innocent who I talk with serves on not just one committee, but two or three, or boards or something, or volunteering in the community. And so I thought, I'm not doing my part. And so I looked around to see what else I could do.
Well, bless your heart, thank you. Are there any questions? So I am with Council Madison.
None, but thank you for being here.
Council Brenner?
Thank you.
It says that you volunteered for the Dunsborough Historic Preservation District? Is that the Dunsborough House in Oakland?
No, no, no. The City of Dunsborough in Northern California. Where I left the Bay Area, we moved there. Car broke down there, and we stayed for 15 years. And then moved to Oregon after that. So the City of Dunsborough is a great historic town, a river town. Built in the 1800s, the house that we lived in was called the Square Nails. So they wanted to create a Historic Preservation District. They needed a photographer. And for whatever reason, they needed photographs of every roof in the Historic Preservation District. I have no idea, but I've been on every roof in the Historic Preservation District in Dunsborough, taking photos.
Interesting.
Anything further?
Well, I know Linda, so... She didn't know that about me. I didn't know this much about me, no, I didn't.
Well, I don't have anything other than, once again, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, so Council Kaufman, you asked me to find the ordinance about appointing somebody else on the planning commission, but this could serve for... Because right now, the URA says has to live in the city, so we could do, if, since we've had no interest from anyone else, I would suggest that we do that. And so I could have an ordinance for the next meeting for that. We would make a special dispensation because you live outside of the city.
Yeah, definitely, that's fine with me.
Do you think for urban renewal it makes sense to, because it is more of a bigger draw? You might have more talent outside of the city than you do here, or wishes to happen to have any interest.
Well, and they do own property within the city, so...
I have two commercial lots and two residential lots that we are going to eventually develop into something, so...
Well, as far as I'm aware, you are appointed.
All right.
And council needs to confirm my appointments, but, and I don't see any of them not affirmed. But, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's good to have you here. Real quickly, Administrator, how many UAR...
None. None? We have four positions and there's no one.
So we only have one now?
Yeah, so...
I'm going to make a pitch for that again, real quickly. This is an important, like I said, all of them are, but this is important as well simply because as you are the Urban Renewal Agency, makes determination how we're going to be, the direction we're going with it, the money that we get with it, how that's going to be spent, all of these things. As it stands now, with the lone exception now, it has been the city council who has been acting as the Urban Renewal Agency with no input whatsoever from the citizens outside. And I've said this in the past, so if you want a voice... I mean, let's put it real succinctly. There is no other type of government in this nation that you can affect more personally than your local one. Simple as that. That's how you get started. That's what you can affect. So if you have the opportunity to go ahead and serve, and once again, I'm not, my "you" here is a universal "you" or a Catholic "you", if you know what that means and everything. It's just, I'm speaking, I know probably to the choir and what have you. But if you get the chance to serve, it's not a bad thing to do. It really isn't. We've had problems in the past because, as Linda pointed out, it was no different. We had a lot of people serving on a lot of different... The same people serving on a lot of different things. And eventually, they get burned out. You know, they get, you know, it gets tiresome. So when we can have people step up to the board, and then you will actually have a voice into how this money is being spent, what direction we're going, what we're doing with it. If no one steps up, then as I said in the past, and I'll repeat one more time, it's not our fault. It's not our fault. If you don't like what we end up doing, it's not our fault. Simple as that. So I want to thank you both very, very much because this personally means a great deal. And I know it means a lot to the council as well, too. So thank you. Now I got off my soapbox. We can move on. All right. And we've got citizens' comments here. Generally speaking, what we have is at the beginning and at the end, I give everybody three minutes to present their case. That's it. That allows us to go ahead and continue with the meeting at, well, I like to see a rapid pace. So at any rate, to begin with, I generally take them in order as I get them, but I'm not too sure what order I got these in. Now, however, let's see. Candace? Yes, ma'am, come on up. And state your name, and just for the record, please.
Candace Callen. I received the city utility bill and under message, contrary to the Spectrum Internet billing statement, the city does not have an internet protocol fee. In August 2019, the city council formally demanded Spectrum remove the inaccurate fee titled from their bills. They have refused. And I am asking you to not just sit on it. I'd like the city council to actively, doggedly pursue the removal of the city fee from the Spectrum bill. I know that you might consider that it's tangential because that's between Spectrum and its customers, but they are asking for money in your name, and you are not receiving it. And I do not want it dropped, even if it goes to something as all the other cities on the coast in a class-action lawsuit. So I don't want it dropped. I don't want it going on. It may not be big, but it's these little incremental nibbles at what's right. And I would like the city to actively pursue Spectrum.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, well, you're echoing our comments as well, too. We're not happy with that. And I know the city administrator has been working on that, and we're with you. Believe me.
Well, when I asked the ladies at the window, and they said that the lawyer had requested, but then they were turned down. And I want to know, what are you doing going forward?
Administrator?
Well, basically, it's, you know, Spectrum is this huge gigantic corporation. They get a fee, they collect a fee for use of the city's rideaway. Okay, that all of the franchise owners, Frontier, all of them, for the use of our public rideaway, okay? But they have chosen to make that use of that, which they have always collected. Now they're putting it on the bill saying that it's an internet fee. And I think, I personally think the reason why they call it an internet fee is because people feel like, you know, well, I shouldn't have to pay extra for that. And I think that they tried to find the most inflammatory way because when that first showed up on the bills, it was last summer. We had folks coming in, we didn't know anything about it until... And so I asked a gentleman if he could bring in his bill so I could see it, and very clearly. So we started contacting Spectrum, and, you know, they're just... They're very frustrating to deal with. They give you the runaround, they send you here, they send you there. So we sent them, the council actually sent them a formal letter where all of them signed it and demanded it. That was in September, I believe. They replied back that they were working on it. Well, here it is, however many... That's exactly it. They're thumbing their nose at us. So, yeah, we'll just, we'll send them another letter. But I think their view is that we're this little tiny city in Oregon, and what are you going to do about it?
Well, that's why I was suggesting some kind of...
Hold on.
This must be happening in other cities besides Gold Beach. And if what it takes is something larger than Gold Beach, joint forces.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for coming in.
Yeah. All right. Beth? For the record, please. Just for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Beth Parker Hidalgo, here in Gold Beach, and copies, or maybe you can take one and pass it down. I may or may not get done in three minutes, so I want you to get a copy of everything that I am submitting. I'm the director of the Very Homeless Coalition, and I'm operating the Southern Oregon Coast Resource Center at 2921 Golden Street, and I'd like to share some data about, to demonstrate some of the work that we're doing here in Gold Beach with our residents that are dealing with extreme poverty and homelessness. And I'd like to invite everyone in the room, if they'd like to come and tour the facility and see what we're doing firsthand in the community, please get ahold of me and I'll make that happen. We operate about twenty-seven and a half hours a week. We're providing access to housing applications for both ORCA and the Coast Guard Housing Authority. We have employment and career navigation services by Skovak and WorkSource Oregon, enclosed closet, showers, laundry services, and client-centered planning. What does that mean? We sit, I spend hour, hour and a half with each client initially, and we do an intake, and I ask them, what are your goals? What are your goals? Not my goals, not what anyone else's goals are, what is it you want to accomplish? And then we start breaking down those goals into steps, and we help walk alongside folks as they attempt to achieve their goals. I do have some questions to ask, and I don't expect answers tonight, but I would like some answers at some point when it's convenient for all those that need to do the research. I'd like to know how many contacts the Gold Beach PD have had with transients, which is a term used by law enforcement to define unhoused people, within the city limits in 2018, and out of those contacts, how many arrests were made? And then again, in 2019, how many contacts with transients within the city limits, and then how many arrests resulted in those contacts in 2019? The number of people, as best you can, that were arrested that we have mental illness diagnoses? How many contacts may have been diverted to our emergency room? And then how many referrals Gold Beach PD has made to the Southern Oregon Coast Resource Center in 2019? To clarify, we opened January 3rd, we got the keys to our facility in 2019, so we've just barely been open a year. We have had, we have 200-plus clients in our database since we opened. We accommodated over 600 visits. Just in February 2020, among the shortest month of the year, we had eighty-eight visitors to the Resource Center. We are experiencing an increase in unhoused people in Curry County and Gold Beach, and there is a variety of reasons why that's happening. I'll share a couple. We had a sixty-five-year-old male who's losing his housing here in Gold Beach because his transition from SSDI/SSI to Social Security retirement, along with his Medicare copay, has left him unable to pay his rent. And that's at Orange Trail Lodge, one of the least expensive places in Gold Beach to live. In 2018, our Community Health Assessment conducted collaboratively by both CCOs serving our Medicaid population, Curry County reports thirty-nine percent of Curry County residents are rent burdened, and I'm gonna suggest that that number has increased, that percentage has probably increased since that assessment was completed. And what that means is people are paying fifty to eighty percent of net income on housing, or even gross income on housing. And I, like I said, I think that that thirty-nine percent has probably crept up just a bit since 2018. The Community Health Improvement Plan implementation is underway. There's seven categories of focus groups working to mitigate negative impacts on our community. One of those workers is focusing on housing and homelessness. We meet monthly, Friday mornings, at the Curry Library, ten to eleven-thirty a.m. upstairs in the conference room. Any one of you are welcome to join us to help share how we address the lack of affordable housing in our community. The Coast Guard Housing Authority, which I serve as a commissioner, reports over seven-hundred people are on the waitlist for housing choice vouchers in their service area, which is both Coos and Curry County. And there are over twelve-hundred people on the Section Eight Housing Program waitlist with only fifty Section Eight units within their service area. Every subsized apartment complex in Curry County currently manages a waitlist of one to three years. So as you can see, there's really no relief for people experiencing situational homelessness, let alone those who meet the criteria for what's defined as chronic homelessness, and those who've been, that's typically those who've been unhoused for up to three years, often resulting in mental illnesses, continually living in crisis and unsafe critical conditions. We, as a community, can take a collaborative and coordinated approach to homelessness, whether you're a city or a county. Without consideration of a coordinated approach, we'll experience migration. We witnessed this when the county code enforcement officer began taking steps to remove an illegal encampment in Harbor. With nowhere for those living in the encampment to go, we began to see new faces coming through our door here in Gold Beach. You know, to be clear, the Homeless Coalition is concerned with public health and safety. We understand the need to mitigate health and safety concerns. Some of you may not know that I have a public health background and experience as it relates to infectious disease control, disaster preparedness, and response. As a result of that background and experience, we understand the need to protect community members from the activities that increase the spread of disease, increase negative outcomes that come with groups of people gathering in locations that do not have the necessary services to prevent public health and public safety negative impacts. We seek the opportunity to work alongside law enforcement and code enforcement to develop plans that provide for services to Medicaid, public health, and safety concerns that we all share. We have implemented programs designed to mitigate the negative impacts of homelessness. A couple of examples is we have what's called our sleeping bag and tent exchange program. We will give clients sleeping bags and tents. If they come back empty-handed and say it got stolen, it was damaged, whatever, we will not give our clients a second sleeping bag or tent. They have to bring in, I don't care what condition it is, if it's ripped to shreds, but they have to bring it back, just because we don't want to see these items left in drainage culverts, under bushes, in parks. We don't want to burden our parks departments and public works departments with having to clean out the outdoor folks. Another program that we offer is a home around program. Today, we have served thirty-three clients with this program, and sending the furthest client to Wisconsin. We will not put people on a bus unless we know that there's a there on the other end in our trip. So we confirm that there's either family support, there's a rehab bed, there's a shelter bed somewhere for folks to go. But we have moved people out of Curry County that do not have the support network here that can find support elsewhere. We discourage people who may want to, in protest, camp or sleep in places that are visible, likely to attract negative law enforcement contact every day. We're losing that battle, regardless of where people bed down at night, they are at some point told to move on. As you may know, Curry County has no general population shelters. It's tough to give advice to people as to where they may sleep when there are no sanction and their supportive resources available to them. There's a diversity amongst the population of unhoused Creteos who are experiencing situational homelessness or anxiously and actively seeking housing, housing that is simply not there, or if it does exist, it's not affordable, or does not meet the criteria for eligibility for rental assistance from ORCA or the Housing Authority. In other words, rents are too high to qualify for rental assistance. At this time, ORCA has extremely limited ability to assist people seeking rental assistance as their funding has been depleted. New funding won't be available until June, maybe October. So what do we ask? We ask for the city of Gold Beach to consider hosting a series of workshops, to consider options for how we, as a community, can mitigate the impacts of homelessness for everyone, and all things considered, continuing to move people along or create an environment where people experiencing homelessness having to constantly fear or run from law or code enforcement results in trauma, child trauma, which can conclude with people experiencing serious mental illness over time. Coalition feels it's time to have comprehensive planning sessions to determine the path toward increasing access to safe staple housing for all in Curry County, or asking the city to take the lead by hosting workshops for diverse participants to include people with lived experience. In closing, I'd like you to take just a moment to consider how it must feel to be constantly told, you can't be here. Thank you for your time, patients, as we navigate this difficult dynamic crisis. I hope to hear back from you with a proposal to address homelessness in Gold Beach, or at least come together and have a conversation about what we can do.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I do, Mr. Ray.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
I was taking notes on your questions that you have for law enforcement. You wanted contacts with the Gold Beach Police for 2018?
With what are categorized, often in the CAD system, when folks are, when there's a contact, they're categorized as transitive, they are unhoused.
So you want transitive?
I would like to know.
Oh, you listed them.
Okay.
Awesome.
And then, yeah.
The other question I had, which might be on the paper, I haven't read because I was listening to you, mental illness arrests. So you're talking about, you want to know how many people were arrested, what we would call fifty-one-fifty for mental?
Or that are, would be categorized as someone having.
And is that 2019, you want that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the point I'm getting to is oftentimes we'll hear our sheriff make the comments that anywhere on any given day, up to thirty-five percent of people in our county jail have, aren't, have mental illness. And we aren't, we don't have the adequate services to respond to those folks in an effective way. Jailing people with mental illness is not going to mitigate their circumstances, it's the catch and release often is what happens, because we don't have adequate mental health services in Curry County and in general. So what do we do about that? It's a, this is a huge issue to deal with, and I don't have, I know, none of us have any of the, all the answers to how to address homelessness in our communities. But I feel like, you know, I have somebody in our office today who may be the majority of folks up here, and even in the audience, who might even know, and when this person sat across me today and said, I love coming in here, it makes me feel good, and I've never felt that way before. She volunteers, and she's somebody who's been unhoused for a very long time, has lived in this community for a very long time. And so I think our approach is to offer some way for folks to build their self-esteem, to feel good about getting up every day and having something to do. We all know that we need to have force and focus in life to thrive, and we're trying to provide that for folks that maybe haven't had that opportunity, or maybe they have, but they weren't ready. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Have you contacted Curry Community Health, when we desire to still our mental health company?
I work, we work with Curry Community Health. We have, Nancy Torni and I are case conferencing, if you will, when we can, when we can get clients to sign ROIs, and we're able to legally have conversations about, you know, their journey and their path, how can we support them? We do. What I understand now, we do have another provider in Curry County that is able to bill Medicaid, and that is Costa Psychology in Brookings, and she's got five providers in her office. So I'm hoping now that she is able to bill Medicaid, word gets out, and perhaps some of the primary care providers can start referring some of the folks to Costa Psychology, and that will help.
The reason I ask is, you know, we're the board of the city, and you're coming to us, partly because you have questions about our police department, and I'm wondering if you've gone to the board of Curry Community Health about the service that they're providing?
I have not gone to their board to talk about the service that they're providing. If you know, as you know, right now, they're in transition and flex in a number of ways. So, no. The answer to that question is no. I have not gone to their board and asked for their, yeah.
So if I may make a public point, our police department is not supposed to be doing mental health.
Exactly.
There is people that are trained to do that, and if they were doing their part, our officers wouldn't have to do as much. We should never send an officer to a crisis problem if they could have gotten help and permits.
And I, my response to that is, Gold Beach and/or Curry County is, we're not alone in this situation. Across this country, particularly in rural America, there aren't enough mental health providers. There are not enough mental health services. Many bond forces and agencies are attending trainings, CMT training and other types of training, so that they are better informed on how to work in collaboration with mental health providers, crisis intervention team members to address the mental health issues that they face day to day in their job. This is not, this is not criticism of any one particular department, we're overwhelmed. We're overwhelmed across the country. I'm asking, how do we eat the elephant? Where do we begin? Can we come together as a community and make a determination as to how we're going to collectively work on the issues that we all are dealing with, and it results to people who are unhoused? Because honestly, we're gonna see more people unhoused before, it's gonna get worse before it expires with these statistics, one of us, and our economy, and our socioeconomic strata here in Curry County, we're headed down a path that's gonna be very difficult to manage, and I would rather do it collaboratively, in a coordinated manner. Again, if we increase services in one community and we don't do that in a coordinated effort across the community, we will force the migration, and none of us can afford that. And so, like I said, when the encampment was moved, that created a ripple effect, it created a ripple effect throughout the county. And I think that we need to be more mindful about how we address issues so that we're not causing undue harm to ourselves or other communities through the process.
I've got a question, actually, I'd like to direct it at our chief police in the back there. Do you, I remember a long time ago, when I was a cop for a while, that we had what we called a police officer hold. In short, when we ran into people with mental problems, we weren't, we had to address it, all right? Because obviously, if we didn't, something bad could have happened. But we also had the option of being able to take that person to a hospital, where they would place them primarily in confinement for twenty-four hours for observation. Do we have that available to us now?
Yes. The way that, would you like me to come up there, can you hear me? I know you're kind of hard to hear.
Thank you, Chief.
The way that the POH or police officer hold works, R S dictates that as a peace officer, if I determine that the person is a threat to themselves or others, then I would take them to the nearest emergency room. At the point that we, that the doctor intakes the patient, they're no longer under our peace officer hold, they're now under the record hold of the hospital and/or mental health, and it could be up to seventy-two hour hold.
Up to seventy-two?
Yes.
All right.
And we have one room at our hospital.
Are they even staying yet? Because I've been hearing everybody, most folks are being diverted to Bay Area Hospital or even St. Vincent's in Portland, they're not, they don't, they don't have a psychiatrist on staff, from what I understand, they don't have, Curry General Hospital doesn't have the staff necessary to legally.
Well, see, there's a reason I asked the chief, is that at one time, we did have here a room that was designated, unfortunately, it was torn apart, and we didn't have that room for quite some time. The new hospital being built, I did not know whether or not that had been reinstated. It is a tool, it is a good tool, but one that the state legislatures and others in the past decided was not, I don't know, wasn't fair to the person, because, yeah, it was infringing upon their liberty. So a lot of that was taken away at one time, so I'm just glad to hear that, and it used to be only twenty-four hours, and I'm glad to see it's up to seventy-two.
Yeah.
But that's.
And again, I mean, we're all about, I mean, we're not, we're not. And again, I mean, we're all about, I mean, we're not, we're not suggesting that we don't need to take those measures with some of our folks in the community, not at all, in fact. And I wish, you know, it just seems like when a pendulum swings, it swings all the way one way or the other. And now we're at a place where people are, we've had a lot of suicide attempts right here in Gold Beach, when in fact, in the lobby of our mental health provider was most recently. And that person was diverted out to St. Vincent's. We, there, there's got to be a, I don't know, I just, I just feel like we have to dialogue this. We need to at least start having a dialogue about how we as a community are going to address the situations. Right now, we're hearing from our clients that are lucky enough to have a vehicle, that they're being advised on where to park, which is outside the city limits. And when they go there, there's no services. And then eventually, they get advised by a sheriff or OSP that they can't stay there either. So we, you know, I just don't know what, I don't know what the answers are. I'd just like to be able to dialogue around this issue so that we can maybe come up with some answers for how we deal with the situation.
Yeah, it is a problem. There's no getting around that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
Uh, Chief Michelle.
Hi.
There you are. Good to see you back there.
Michelle Fritsch, here with Gold Beach Main Street tonight. What I'd like to let you guys know and ask is, we are doing a celebration of 130 years of Gold Beach, being changed from Ellensburg to Gold Beach. It's going to be a party at the port. We've already got some good things happening. We have the Ferguson Brothers' party for sure. We have Art Rock Brewery going to be there. We have John Ruckert with his wondering pizza, pizza only. And we have now several other craft, art and craft vendors and some other food vendors that are all on task and they're excited to do it. What I'm hoping is, well, let me give you, this is not a very good copy, but it's the best I could do at school. It goes out. It's going to be the flyer. We have right now vendor forms and sponsor forms. What we're looking, the primary goal of this is to bring Gold Beach back together as a community and have a good community celebration. And bringing in the historical aspects. I've got people working on some Indian stuff. So hopefully we'll have some kind of display. I'm looking for a gold piano and kind of on that. Some logging, some fishing. ODFW might come down from Newport and do a fish identification thing, just to embellish on everything that we have here in Gold Beach, to help our businesses, to help our community, to help it thrive, because it is awesome. I think we all agree with that. And so the goal is, hopefully, this will just be the beginning of something even better. But because we're at 130 years, changing from Ellensburg, it's like something that we want to really promote and use for a reason to get going for the first year. What she has passed around, it'll be a better looking flyer than what it is right now. If you look on the bottom right, the celebrating 130 years of Gold Beach, Oregon, underneath there says, "Established 1890." That's the logo that we're getting t-shirts and hoodies and stuff like that made for, to support it. Anyway, what I was hoping is maybe we can get some, maybe $1,500 from the TLT monies to help support the cost that we have for our band, for our banners, for primarily advertising and promotion, to get this out. And we want to start with, before the float season is over with the visitor center, getting it out there so people will come back knowing. I know we're really booked up that, you know, end of June, beginning of July, but I think it's great because if they keep coming back, that just helps everybody do even better. And so I'm not sure if I can just come and request that, or if there's something else I need to do to see if we can get that kind of support for the party at the port.
That's fair. Go ahead.
There's, you just, you need to fill out a promo grant request and it doesn't actually come to the council.
Okay. So if I do that, then about how long do you think it'll...
I, I usually look at it right away.
Oh, so you just review it and then decide yes or no?
Yep.
Okay. And so, any other questions? If you guys know any local, we're totally promoting local artists.
One thing, you're writing up the 130 years. Did you know that Gold Beach is celebrated in the 75th?
Yeah, and I wonder about the logistics of all the...
Actually, where it's been named, Gold Beach?
Right. And then I saw a Beth Swett shirt and it says 1853. And I believe that's when it became Ellensburg. So I believe everybody's kind of using different numbers or whatever. But yeah, I did. And I wondered where the 75...
And it incorporated city.
Incorporated, there you go.
And incorporated city, it was April, what, 24th, 1945.
Oh, okay. And I believe it was March something of 1890 where they actually changed the name, but the logistics didn't get through the courts until January of the following year.
Oh, wow.
And so, yeah, so that's the research I've done. This was a couple of years ago where I realized it'd be 130. So I figured it would be a good way to bring the community back. Because I know when I'd come and visit in the late 90s, excuse me, it was awesome on 4th of July. Everybody was out and doing things and supporting the fireworks, supporting just the businesses too. So hopefully we'll get, I don't know, and we're just trying to help improve everybody's business and hopefully they'll come back in the off-season as well. And so, yeah. That's it. All right. And so I can just get that form to you and...
Yeah, you can pick one up in the office. And it may actually be on our website too, the goldbeachoregon.gov. And if not, I can email one to Lindsay and she can get it to you.
Yeah, all right. Well, and actually, I think Summer's actually shown me that too. I just knew I needed to. Is that the one we've talked about before?
Yeah.
So, okay. All right, cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
We're here, we're a little dry.
And speaking with Lindsay.
Yep. And Lindsay, I think you have a report for us.
I want to say anything about the one thing, so...
Perfect. Okay, so I actually have it on the bottom of the sheet, but we might as well start with the good news is that this weekend, we were told, after updating Ford with our memorandum of understanding between the city of Gold Beach Main Street and updated budget, that we did receive the extra funding to continue this position for the whole year. Left brain, isn't it? So I'll be here the whole year.
How was your board?
Yes, yes.
And that was, that was Lindsay's work. She was the one that submitted the application. It was all her. It's a change.
A lot of it was gotten before I came in. But, so that's good news. And then also, recently, we attended a local grant writing workshop put on by Travel Oregon and Merida House Friday ago, actually. And then after that was over, we also attended a conversation with funders across Oregon and got to ask them some Q and A questions and kind of get that one-on-one, to kind of see what we went on for, see what we can do in the future. And then currently, the Promotion Outreach Committee is dedicated to getting vendors and sponsors for the party at the port. And that seems to be going really well. And then also, right now, Gold Beach Main Street has been working with Tim Green with the 2020 USA World Jet Boat Champion, or Championship Jet Boat Races. They have an event in May. And it's only held in the U.S. every four years. This year it's happening. And so the road is the last leg of that race, which is exciting because that means that the award show and everything will be held in Gold Beach in May. And so they expect 15,000 visitors. And luckily, by partnering with them, we're getting 10% of their sponsorship booklet sponsor funds. So that's a good fundraiser for us. And it's a good way to help draw people here, which is the whole point of Gold Beach Main Street. And then we are going to finish coordinating the data set up, our strategic planning. And hopefully, once we get that figured out, because it's going to take some parts, because I'm sure we'd like to have our urban renewal agency, my Ivan, and a few other plans and that. So we're going to work on that. And then once we get that set up, we'll announce that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Congratulations on being funded for the rest of the year eight.
And Lindsay's been doing a really fabulous job. She's been just a joy to have in the office. We really appreciate having her there.
Yep.
All right. Monthly update of the city's strategic plan goals.
Okay, so I, you know, since we're getting late in the evening, if there, there it is, if you have any questions or you want to add anything or think that we need to look at stuff, let me know.
Anybody have any questions or need to refer concerning that?
The yellow highlighted ones are the, the update for this month.
Right.
So if there's anything, questions or whatever.
No questions? Then we're going to move on to C, which is update a gas tax measure and the FAQs for citizens. The administrator and I talked about this a little bit this afternoon. And the idea of being able to get this information out to the public, questions and answers and what have you. We thought also that the press could help us with that as well, so that people are not misinformed, but rather actually informed as to why this is getting to be kind of a critical thing. So with that in mind, sure, go ahead.
So, last time in 2018, we didn't do any public outreach. And the reason for that was, that was the year that we had done the survey. We had sent it out in the water bills. We also had a survey monkey where they can do the digital. So we felt like everybody kind of knew what was going on, but since it failed miserably, obviously, that was not the case. So what I wanted to do, once it becomes a ballot measure, which I don't have the number from the clerk yet, we've given him all the stuff and I think we're good to go because we haven't heard otherwise, but we don't have the measure number yet. Once we get that, then Mr. Nudal and I can't, staff can't really talk about it other than to just provide facts. We can't, we can't be pro, we can't be con, we can just provide information. So what I tried to do was, was make the questions, what, what I thought people would want to know, and to just try to be as, you know, just as middle of the road as possible, not make it sound like, you know, things are horrible or a lot of this is really wonderful. Just try to answer the question. So what I would like from the council is, after we looked at this, are there any questions you feel that aren't covered? Because you are the folks that are going to have to talk to people about this. Will and I can answer questions, but we have to tread lightly because we can get in trouble with the Secretary of State if it appears that we're promoting it.
Yeah. Well, to begin with, I want to say that I thought, once again, you did a wonderful job writing those questions and answers up. I thought that the language and everything that was used was right down the middle, easy to understand. So thank you, ma'am. And with that in mind, Counselor Kim.
I just want to clarify what I think is happening. Once we get the number, city staff can't talk pro about this. And you're saying that that then lies on the council, so we need to promote it? Correct. Do we need permission to promote that? I mean, could I literally go to the local radio station and say, "I want to do a five-minute blurb about this wonderful new tax"?
Yeah, you, elected officials, y'all. Yeah, elected officials don't have the same constraints that, that public employees do. Now, I would suggest, you know, that's the conversation that you can have right now because May is not that far away. But say, okay, is it okay if one of you goes and talks on the radio? And are you going to be okay with that amongst yourselves?
And the other thing I was thinking is an article for the local newspaper.
Well, I'm hoping, like Mr. Mayor said, absolutely.
Could you write something out? Not that you're not doing a stellar job, but all of y'all. Love you. I mean, I'm not trying to be smart aleck, but I could write something out and article and submit it to y'all. No? Yes? No? Okay.
What? Yeah, go ahead.
Can I give you the number?
Pardon?
Can I give you the number?
How do you know?
Because it's already uploaded on their website.
Well, it would have been nice if somebody had told us.
8-100.
Okay.
Ooh, that's an easy one.
City of Gold Beach, adoption of tax on motor vehicle steel dealers.
Yeah, I was waiting here from the clerk's office. Okay, so evidently, everyone else knew before us.
Phil's got one.
Well, we can talk about it, but only in general terms. We can't, we can't be pro or con. We have to, that's why I tried to make the questions where they were just facts.
That's fair.
So, speaking of facts, if I understand correctly, we're hoping to get about $143,000 from the street tax. And that's one cent in the winter and four cents in the summer.
Correct.
And if we put it on utility bills, we're going to have to add about $5.
Well, the...
Because you said $2 was 28. So I'm thinking it's about 5, 5.30 to get to 143. So naturally, the message, I think, is important, is that we don't have a lot of options. To be a fiduciary for the city, we need streets and we need them maintained. So one way is, you could pay for the gas tax, or our only other option is to put it on the utility bills, and that's going to be probably retro to about 5, 5 and 1/4 if my math is right.
And that will get you, what's the word that they use? Recall.
I don't know what's the next, the next term.
As far as I know, what you were recalling in there was, if we did it with the, on the utility bill and what have you, we could be generating something, what was, $25,000?
Well, because staff had proposed, because, you know, we didn't want to say $5, but staff had proposed $2. And, and it's not, I want to clarify that it is not increasing water utility rates, it's just that that's a mechanism to collect it because we send out bills for that. But the downside to that is that it's only the customers that, that would get that.
Counselor, go ahead.
I think our biggest thing to push to you people is going to be the fact that this is not for Ellensburg, this is for all of our streets. So this is literally the streets that we use daily, not just the highway that the public is constantly using too. This is all of our street repairs. Anything for state.
Yeah, wouldn't be anything to do with Ellensburg.
Yeah, or most of Hunter Creek.
We don't own that.
There's, there's only a few roads that we own out in Hunter Creek. But like Hunter Creek Loop, all that, those are still owned and maintained by the county. So I think mostly just Gold Beach proper and not Highway 101 or Ellensburg.
Real quickly, Counselor Kaufman, I'm going to let Counselor Brennan go first.
I just think that what the city, as the mayor started to come up with as far as his question to move, it does answer a lot of questions that we didn't address maybe before about property tax. You know, people may think that part of the property tax goes to street maintenance or the water bill. So those, those things are important to make sure that that information gets passed on. And that it would be shared by everybody that comes and stays in town, just like Brooklyn does, you know, that's... The one cent during the off-season is on the residents or people coming through. But the four cents is, is when we get all the, all the traffic here. And those people use our streets too, you know, their vacation rental or wherever, they're driving on our streets. And that way, it spreads the burden from just local people to the whole population.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Counselor?
I, I think you were joking about the recall, but in case you weren't, I, I think it would be remiss of my duty, when I read a very lengthy Street's Master Plan that says, "We don't have enough money to say that citizens, you have an option of a gas tax or a utility fee. That's really all we have." You can recall me, that's fine, but my job is to make sure that you have streets and that you have water and that you have sewer and that you have police and you have fire. That's my job as city councilor. That's what I was elected for. And that's what I'm doing. I don't like taxes, I don't like fees, I hate them. I'm as frugal as that person being here.
We all do, and yes, I was joking about that, the recall. But the point is, is that, and, and as you've heard me say more than once, the entire business of city government, of government, particularly city government, is all about safety. Every bit of it is about safety. Please, fire, wastewater treatment, clean water, safe streets to drive on, everything's safety and we've got to be able to do that, yes. At any rate, I think our best shot really is that we can go ahead and try to promote... At any rate, I think our best shot really is that we can go ahead and try to promote this a little bit better, because I've already heard from the public, at least a few people, not the general public as a whole, but a few, that they want to know why the old adage about trying the same thing over and over again and not succeeding is the definition of insanity. And they want to know why we're doing it again, all right? And are upset with us doing it again. I knew we were going to run into that type of thing anyway. But if nothing else, with better information and a little better handle on what this is all about, hopefully, we can get a better response this time. You were going to continue on.
Yeah, I will. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
I do agree, I think it was Counselor Bravano that said, "We do need to talk about, we are not the county, we don't have the county road fund. We're not the state, we don't have the state road fund. We do have quite a few streets, and they are all paved except for the tiny one on Featherway."
The one I live on, thank you very much. Our city councillor lives on a gravel road.
So, but they were paved because the county gave us a million dollars in the late 80s, early 90s. They're never going to give us another million dollars to take care of our roads. And probably rightly so. I'm not faulting them for that. But since then, we've not really put into place any mechanism to fund our streets. And we've been told we're in tears time. And the answer to that question, if you get that question again, is, when we put it on the ballot last night, we didn't know the county was going to try to take over the city. We had three hotly contested races, and none of us could campaign for the street tax. Because we didn't know, were they running against us because of the street tax? Or were they just running against us by coincidence? Or were there really three county employees trying to take over the city? We didn't know. We still don't know. But we do know that nobody campaigned for it.
Well, it was based primarily on what we returned, what was returned on the bill.
We expected people to understand. And they did.
Well, according to the appearance stage, it looked as if they did understand. What we had, we had quite a majority opt for, you know, when they responded to our request, to decide whether or not they wanted this fee, tax, whatever you want to call it. Still amounts to the same thing, obviously. But the vast majority that responded to this said that they did. So we thought we were on pretty solid ground. And then with the results back, we were, it was soundly defeated. And I do mean soundly defeated. So at any rate, it caught us by surprise, I think. I know it caught me by surprise, because I thought we would do much better on it than what we did, based upon the information that we had been receiving. So anyway, we are going to try it again. And if that's the definition of insanity, then so be it, then, you know. But we are going to try one more time. And hopefully, we're going to be able to have people a little bit more informed and be in a position to be able to inform them better. Because it's, they go together. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so after reading it, were there any questions you felt like didn't get answered? Or you think that people might, like, have questions about that I had not considered? I tried to kind of poll a couple of people and say, okay, if I were going to give you information, what would the questions be that you would ask? And that's kind of how I came up with them. Are there any, like, that jumped out at you, like, hey, if I were somebody, I would want to know this?
I, as I told you already, I thought that you did an excellent job with that. I don't have any further suggestions. Counselor, do you, any of you have anything?
Thank you for doing that.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is, we're going to, it'll be a little bit smaller so that we can fit it in the water bill. But we'll have them available here at City Hall. And then I'll give you all copies of it so that, you know, when you get cornered in the grocery store, you are able to, you know, provide good information. And then, then, yes, Counselor Campbell, if, you know, if you want to do something. I think you and Melinda had done something on the radio for the fire truck levy a couple of years back. So, yeah, whatever you can do. And then, like I said, Mr. Nudal and I can answer questions about, like, what is the money for? If people want to see, we're also going to post the payment study that this is based on, on the website, so folks can see, you know, exactly where the engineer identified areas that needed to be repaired. And then it will be up to the council on what you decide are priorities for those projects. You know, they listed them. But that way, it's completely transparent. People can see, you know, what are we basing this decision on. And I would just say that, like, the only frustration I can say that I've had is that I know that there's a large segment of people that go to Brookings to buy their gas at Fred Meyer. And I would just say that every time you go to Fred Meyer to buy your gas, you're helping to repair Brookings roads. And I would really love it if you would help repair our roads instead of Brookings.
All right. Are we through with that? Yes, sir. Or yes, ma'am?
Can I give some training work for that?
Yeah.
All right. What I'm going to do real quickly, Administrator, we're looking at the continued review of the draft code amendments for short-term vacation rental.
Yes.
What are we looking at as far as time there? Do you have any idea? Because if we're looking at more time than, than I'd like to see right off the bat, I'd like to call a recess. We've been here since 6 o'clock.
So, like, 10 minutes?
Hmm?
Like, 10 minutes?
10 minutes on this?
No, I mean, like, for a break?
Yeah. We're going to call, I'm going to go ahead and call recess for, no later than 8 o'clock, roughly about 10 minutes or so. So feel free to get up, stretch your legs a little bit. Go ahead and continue on with the review of the draft code amendments for the short-term vacation rental.
Okay, so, and I just realized that I forgot to call Lincoln City today because I was doing some other things. But were there any other, and I'm going to ask Counselor Kaufman because she was the one that kind of started, was there, I didn't have any notes from last month. Were there other things that I didn't capture?
Yeah. The biggest part was, we were going to do 10 in the residential zones, not 10 in R10, 2R10, 3R10.
And I had that note.
Yeah, but I didn't see it changed here.
No, I mean, um...
Yeah. You asked for anything else to change, and it's like, it's not changed.
No, I didn't change it. That was a section that the attorney put in there. I had my notes that we were going to say 10 just for the residential. But was there something, was there any other notes from the prior meeting?
I think that'll do it. And then we can look at it, like, on an annual basis and see if it's working.
Okay.
How does that sound?
Okay.
Feasible.
Okay, and then for the item F, where it said, "The permit for vacation rental will expire upon the 12th consecutive month of the dwelling failing to report or submit." I think that needs to be reworked. And we did talk about that last month, that, okay, I don't think it should be failing to report, but maybe 12 consecutive months of...
Inactivity.
Inactivity.
No income.
Yeah, because we require them to report, they just have to tell me we didn't have any rental, but they still have to report. But so instead of failing to report, but just saying that inactivity, and then, do you want it to come back? Usually, the residential ones have a conditional use permit. And maybe we could put that in the standards governing vacation rental use. It starts on page 35 and goes to page 36. Maybe we could add that as an I and just say, if the, if the unit is, if there's inactivity for 12 months, then it'll come back before the planning commission?
12 consecutive months?
Yeah.
12 months?
Well, yeah, 12 months. Because there's some people that do, like, six months in the summertime and then, but then Counselor Kaufman was saying something about the new state logic.
It's going to get hard with new law.
Yeah.
She can't force them to leave.
Okay. So if we're okay with that, I'll add section I in the conditions. And what that is, is that when they get issued a permit, they have, those are the standard conditions that everyone gets. And then if it's at the hearing, if there's any, like, particular or special concerns about a particular location, like parking or whatever, the county, the planning commission can add additional conditions. But these are ones that all of them get it. So, okay, so then I will have the draft version of the code amendment for the zoning code for you next month. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you remember our answers to his questions?
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Anything further on that? All right, I think Counselor Madison and Brennan have something to discuss in the subcommittee work.
Do you want to mention that T G M, that from Darren, the grant thing was...
Sure.
Okay, which one of you would like to start it off? Counselor Madison, get on that.
Commissioner, Counselor Brennan and I, I've been communicating with ODOT and have outlined a tentative schedule that we will share as soon as we get that solidified. But I think we have a meeting with ODOT on Friday at 3:00. And then we're beginning the third week, maybe the 4th of March, for our first community meeting. The second one, likely the 3rd week of April. And then bring results to the council in May. So we've been busy. We disseminated all the N V Ds that we want to make sure everyone places to do and collected all of the pros and cons, resources that we have, just to get better information. And then we'll grind the rest of that from ODOT this Friday. And then we'll start promoting those meetings. Just kind of make it back to the house.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And we can, we can house about 70 people in this room. If it looks like you're getting a lot of interest, we may have to have it somewhere else.
That's fine. Oh, the T G M that you had mentioned, Darren Evil, had emailed us and said that there is no money available. So there's a little bit of a carrot there to really look at what the potential of this budget could have on the City of Bull Beach.
Counselor Brennan, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I do.
Yes, sir.
I think, you know, what we, what we want to do is get, we want to meet with ODOT and then make sure that, like Counselor Madison said, we have, we know that Main Street wants to be involved. So once we get some information that we need, then we can, we're going to go with them and then just keep expanding.
Good idea. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both very much. All right. Now we've got the budget committee calendar dates that we would like to discuss.
Okay, everybody get their calendars out. So typically, we start in April, and usually it's like mid-April. I would prefer, you know, mid to late April, because this is, every fourth year, we do a salary study. And then also, the Teamsters contract is up this year too, which that's, that's why we do the salary study at the same time. So that, I have started that, but I still have a ways to go on that. And then just the normal budget prep. So like, the week of the 20th or the week of the 27th, how does, how does that look for folks? And...
Do we change?
Mr. Chan, sorry.
Well, yours is planned.
I was going to call Mr. Craig. It's like, no, it's not Mr. Craig. And usually, we get done in one night, but we try to do two nights. And they don't necessarily have to be consecutive, because we've skipped, like, a night in between before. But usually, we get through it in one evening. But plan on two...
Try to keep it as close together as possible.
Just because that way, it's fresh in everybody's memory.
Right, exactly.
So the week of April 20th or the week of April 27th, which would be the, April actually has five weeks this year. So it would be the fourth and fifth week of April. And we can start, you know, I, most, most of you guys have day jobs, so we can start, like, as early as we want after work gets over.
This is the one you make us dinner?
Yes. Yes. That's true. Well, if it's before 6:00 PM, I feed you guys, so, yeah.
I'm open all of the 20th, that whole week.
Okay, Counselor Kaufman, you travel, so...
My calendar says I'm supposed to be home the 23rd and 24th.
Okay, so how does that look for people, 23rd and 24th?
That works for me. I can't do the 24th.
Pip?
Counselor Campbell?
I'm available the 23rd and 24th.
Okay, perfect. All right.
Now, I may not be, okay?
Okay.
But then, I am not, as far as the Budget Committee is concerned, the mayor doesn't have any other role other than, you know, I can offer suggestions or that type of thing. But the Budget Committee is handled by the City Council and, generally speaking, five citizens who work together on that. So whoever they elect as their chairperson is the one that has the actual running of the Budget Committee.
Okay, so...
My presence is not absolutely necessary.
Is that a 5:30, ma'am?
Um, that's the other thing. Do you guys want to start at 5:00 or 5:30? Because I know you guys get off at 5:00, so do we when I say 5:30?
I can flex. So flexible.
I can do whatever.
5:30, ma'am?
5:30?
Let's start at 5:00.
5:00? Okay.
Five?
Okay. So 5:00 PM on April 23rd. And I'll send you a reminder too.
So you usually deliver the packets a week before?
By state law, yes. I have to have them a week ahead of time.
I'll be home sometime today.
Okay. Okay, so the 23rd, so my draft date is the 16th. Yeah, that was easy.
All right. Good enough.
Okay.
City Administrator, you got to report access for us.
Um, real quickly, may I add one thing to the agenda, Mr. Mayor? This was this one. And he's not here, but I sent him, I want to talk about it. This is the Mid-Tier Road.
Okay, I didn't talk.
Okay. And I thought it was going to cost time.
Until we got citizens comments afterwards, but, no, this is fine right now.
Okay, and then I'll send it. Okay, so I gave you copies of the photos. Mr. Um...
Please.
Yeah, I can't think of his last name. I'm talking about having moments here. Mr. Johnson is the neighbor out by the Crib property. Okay, I sent Anthony out there today to take some more photos. And, and yes, it has, there's portions of it that are falling down now. But I had Anthony check, my Anthony, and he has gotten through his septic stuff. That just, he just finally was able to get through that in January. So D E Q has issued him a permit. So I told Anthony to contact him today. I don't know if he, he left him a message, I don't know if he got through to him, to say, okay, we need to, you know, we need to move forward on your building permit. Because the plan was that he was going to take it down and replace it with a manufacturer bomb. So now that he's got his D E Q approval, because that was kind of what Counselor Kaufman was kind of waiting to see, because if he took the building down beforehand, that they may not have let him. But he does have his permit now with D E Q. So what I was hoping from you guys tonight is that I could send him another letter saying, okay, you have this much time to get your building permit and get that building down. So how much of that, this much time you have? Or at least get the building down.
30 days.
So next council meeting?
By then, I would think. Counselor, what do you guys think?
It's got to get down. He can't keep...
Yeah, it does.
We've been very, very, very generous.
Okay, and I will say that too.
So give him 30 days.
And he's got very nice weather right now, too.
And that was what my Anthony had said earlier, that, you know, weather's good now, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so by next council meeting?
Exactly.
Building down?
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so, CM report, Public Works, and I think poor Will sitting through this whole meeting, thinking that there was a couple of topics that we might need him for, and so, no, that didn't happen. But it would have happened if you weren't here. But it would have happened if you weren't here, yeah. So, um, Public Works finished, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, finished clearing out the new park property, and if you have the opportunity, please go look at it. It's, this is the East End, if you go to the parking lot, you can just walk right across the little bridge, and the flat area there is just beautiful, and it's going to be so nice in the summertime, it, there's, it's a little bowl in there, there's not going to be any wind, um, there's, they cut kind of a nice little trail up the hill, um, the disc ball people have been just going crazy putting in baskets in down there, so it's just, it's a really, I mean, we were happy to get the property, but now that we've seen it all cleared, it's just, it's a fabulous addition to the park. It's really great.
Very nice, yeah, humble.
It really, it's, it's really nice in there. Yeah, and, and the flat spot is big enough that, um, you know, like, someone could have like a family reunion or something down there, it's a, it's a pretty large area, so that was nice. But, uh, please, the stats are there, um, as Counselor Pagano said, Corporal Warren is officially no longer with us. He just decided, he had invested in some local property, and he decided he wanted to continue doing that, so his last day was the 21st of last month, and, you know, we wish him the best of luck on his, his new venture, so he's going to be a land baron now. Fire, uh, we did have a structured fire this month that was just a couple of weeks ago. It's the plaza between Ireland's and the Beach Comrades where Chris Kusink used to have his office, but he's not there anymore, now it's just the Ireland's Plaza. Thankfully, no one was inside when the fire happened, but Chief Krieger said that he wanted everyone to know that the new engine was utilized, that's what put out the fire, and he said, and I said, well, I'm going to quote you on this, he said, "We drove right up to that window, and with the bow mounted gun, we snuffed it out." So, um, he and, he is a trained fire investigator, and there's one other person on our crew that is also, and I don't know that they've completed their investigation on what the cause of the fire was, but thankfully, it was just in the south end of the building, it didn't get the whole building.
Is there anybody in it? Is anybody ready yet?
On the north end of the building, that's where the Pilates studio is, and she actually came in and talked to me last week about, you know, like, when can they move in, and when can they do things, and I said, well, that's really not, I mean, it's kind of more of a question for your insurance company, because we don't really, um, we just put the fire out and tried to determine what it is, but whether the building is safe to be in, that's-
The rumor is that it was arson, so.
Yeah, and that I don't know, because, like I said, Chief Krieger's, there's, as far as I know, the investigation report has not, hasn't been completed yet, but, so I, I got the, the lady that has a Pilates studio, I gave her some information on how to get ahold of somebody higher up in her insurance company, so hopefully they can help her, but thankfully, there wasn't anybody in the building at the time of the fire.
Oh, wow.
So, uh, but we don't often have structured fires, so that's, that's kind of a good deal. Gear number for budget season in the front office, I do want to say, those boxes over there, those are bags, and I gave you guys a copy, uh, gave you each a bag, those are the bags that we're going to be taking to the San Francisco show, that was the bag that went to the Vancouver show. We do a regional booth with Travel Southern Oregon Coast and a couple other local partners, and that's the bag that will be taken, so those will all be stuffed and gone next month. And the folks up front do all the bag stuffing for me, which is really fabulous, so I just wanted to let my front office know, appreciate them. And Lindsay actually helped us too, last time. All the hurrah over the COVID-19 virus, you might have noticed when you came in, there was a thing on the door about how to, you know, keep yourself safe. The, the big thing, we, I did a memo to everybody in, in employee-wise, and just said, you know, the big thing is just, you know, don't panic, but, you know, common sense, wash your hands, um, if you think that, you know, don't go to places where there's lots of people gathering, that type of thing, but I put the information in there from the Oregon Health Authority, so, um, just, you know, if you get asked, that's information that the state puts out. This is, not that it's the same as cold and flu season, but the, the rules are kind of the same, you know, wash your hands, clean things up. We've been doing more disinfecting on a higher level, every day, wiping down the door and the counter and things like that, just to, you know, just to make sure.
It's a good idea.
Yep. Um, and then the Vancouver show that we just got back from, uh, actually, no, let me back that up, last float season started February 1st, uh, this year was way better than last year. Last year, we got hit hard by the roadslide, and we never really recovered from that, even after the road got repaired, I think people were still afraid even over. So, um, 3,823 visitors at the Visitor Center, that's a record for float season, and Naomi reported that 1,000 of them were over the Valentine weekend, because they do a special red float drop just for Valentine's Day, so we had 1,000 visitors over Valentine's weekend that just checked in at the Visitor Center, I mean, there could have been more, so that was pretty cool. And the biggest turn in for receipts, we had over $48,000 in receipts turned in for free floats, and for those of you that may not know, if you spend $25 or more in one of the participating stores, bring your receipt to the Visitor Center, we give you a free float, um, but we write down how much the receipt was for, and then we let the businesses know at the end of the season how much of their receipts were turned in. So, um, 48,000 was like over 10,000 more than our highest month prior to that, so that's good, because last year, things were not so good. Anthony did the Eugene and Medford sports shows this year, I did the Roseburg one, because we have family over there, and we stay with them. We did the new show in Vancouver, B.C., that was last weekend, that's why I moved to the meeting, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it was an awesome show, it was really, um, it was kind of interesting, I was telling Mr. Mayor this earlier, that it's 10 hours to Vancouver, B.C., it's 9 hours to San Francisco, and even though we've been doing the San Francisco show, this will be our 7th, this will be our 8th year, the people, they, they don't even know where, they don't even know where Oregon is, in California, I mean, when, they're like, where are you? Yeah, and so it's like, we spend the whole show trying to like, to teach them basic geography and where the Redwoods are, that they don't even know where in their state. In B.C., it was like, I would say probably 85% of the people that came to our booth, not only did they know where Or- the Oregon coast was, but about 50% of them had actually been to Gold Beach, they knew right where we were, and that was amazing, I, I, after the first day, I told the next, the people the next day, I said, you know, when we go to San Francisco, I am going to shame the Americans, because the Canadians know Gold Beach better than, than the Californians do.
Well, we're going to be thankful for that.
Yeah, I mean, it was awesome, and they were just, and everything you hear, the stereotype of the Canadians, it was true, they were so nice, they were so pleasant. I was telling Mr. Mayor that when we got into Vancouver, there was this out-of-service bus that said "out of service," and then it flashed, "Sorry." I actually, I actually texted my husband, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, even their bus apologizing." It was amazing. But the venue where they had it was really wonderful, it was a really classy joint, there's some, uh, some pictures there of the outside of the place, so we are totally doing the show next year, and I think I have the, our regional group pretty much talked into form with us next year, because where we were at, we had, um, we had a whole block of Oregon, so, which was kind of cool, we had Travel Oregon, we had Clamette, we had Travel Southern Oregon, they had us next to Portland, but, you know, um, but hopefully, T-Soc is probably going to go with us next year, so then we'll have a bigger presence, but it was a really great show, so I'm glad we went. And that's it, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Counselor Madison, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I'll be quick. Uh, let's see, the housing forum for this year's been established, it's going to be October 3rd, and, um, the last meeting, we did some strategic planning, one year and five year goals. You might have heard HGTV was doing a hometown takeover?
Yes. So, where did they take over?
Uh, well, they haven't decided yet.
What do we have to do to get them to come here?
Oh, the deadline's already passed. So me and my cell phone went on a little mission in town, and I made a video, and took lots of photos, and, uh, you know, did a quick write-up and submitted that, so-
We can see how it goes.
Yeah, I took one for the team, because the last one was my face on TV.
Well, thank you, that's awesome.
Wrote down the dates, we did that. Gas tax, a little bit of that. Night sky ordinance, um, we can have a conversation about that as well. Next meeting, um, I can send some emails and information if you'd like, but it's something that has been brought up several times over the years, and, um, hoping that we can do it, um, kind of like, I think it would be a benefit for tourism and accessing the ocean and the night sky, we don't have a super big city here, so we have the opportunity to kind of keep that in check.
What's this conjunction with, I'm sorry, Counselor, I, I did not hear the very first part of which word?
Uh, it's a night sky ordinance, and so it's basically just more control of the light, so it's not-
Oh, okay.
There's no, like, light pollution, it's more controlled.
Port Hartford has it, and it's, it's where like the lights are, where they point down and not up.
Right.
So that way, you know, you get an unobstructed view of the, of the night sky.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, I'm familiar with that, I just did not know, I did not hear it at the beginning. Is there anything further, ma'am?
Um, working with the Chamber on revitalization, as you know, we were talking about doing kind of like Chamber type service, so met with Chambers and he goes, "What do you want to do? Do you, do you want to continue and revitalize?" And they all do, so with the exception of Port Hartford. So anyways, um, Gold Beach is, got some great board members, they have more openings, they're always looking for memberships, but I think they're looking to bring more substance and focus less on tourism and more on business development and supportive services like that, so I'm pretty excited for the leadership they have there right now. Travel Southern Oregon's bringing a online marketing 101 course to the library on April 8th, it's an all-day event, but they're going to stay with the brunch, so, um, kind of pushing that in hopes that people take advantage of that, um, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Brennan?
I have a question.
Counselor Pagano?
Just another reminder that jet boats are almost here, Memorial Day weekend.
Oh, yeah. Well, and, well, baseball season's coming up, too. Counselor Campbell?
I'm going to talk a little bit about the Event Center on the Beach and the roof project.
Okay.
We submitted or requested sealed bids for the roof on the Event Center. We published the bid request not only in the local newspaper, but in a statewide journal that you post bids on, that construction companies look at. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids for the roof at the Event Center. So our city administrator, awesome lady, came up with a list of local contractors that are large enough that they, we are going to invite them to bid, basically. The good thing is, uh, we got an email from a construction company who said, "Hey, we missed the bid on the roof, can we submit one?" So, uh, we do have one company that is interested in re-roofing Doshia Suite at the Event Center, and we're, uh, the Event Center manager, Kate McCollman is going to seek other bids as well.
Can I send you that email right away?
Yeah, I'm hoping that, um, you know, they, they have reserved the entire month of August for the new roof, they're not renting out that Event Center, that specific, the Doshia Suite, for that entire month in anticipation of getting the roof. So I'm not going to drop the ball, we'll get somebody out there to do that darn roof, we have the money for it, we've got the time blocked off, all we need is-
Someone to do it.
-to get a willing person to come to our remote little village on the coast and build that roof, so.
Just took it to where you bid, too, because you're not busy.
I was hoping that we would already have a bid in our pocket by now, because I know that the bigger companies, you know, plan their summers specifically for their roofing projects, and I didn't want to get behind the eight ball on that, so, um, I'll continue to work on that, and hopefully by next month, I'll have good news for you.
Looking forward to it. All right, thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Um, I resign from the core team of the Housing Fastballs. Thankfully, summer is on that, so we also have great representation, and, um, I promised to work on a couple of tasks, and one of them was a toolkit for, somebody wants to develop in the area, if each city has a toolkit that says, "Here's who does what, here who does this," and, you know, maybe even a staff member that'll hold somebody's hand and say, "Okay, let me introduce you to the local inspector, or let me show you where this is," and so I think, Julie and Anthony will do most of the work on that, if I just need courage to. And so that was an easy volunteer thing to do, and I have one other thing, but I don't remember what it was, and so it can't be that important, right? What if that was my big?
Well, if you happen to remember the other thing, then feel free to jump in, get back.
I had one thing that I forgot to mention, I had it sitting here. You probably have heard, our former Fire Chief Bruce Boyd passed away, and, um, he'd been fighting cancer for some time, so his brother got ahold of me and asked, and I said that I would talk to the council about it, and I would say, ponder it, and we'll talk about it next month, but he was hoping for the years of service that Bruce had put into the city, that, um, that the city would be willing to name the Fire Hall in his honor. And so, um, I said that I would talk to you guys about that, and, yeah, you can let me know next month what you think about that. His service, he just contacted me today, they were going to have a service in May, but the service is going to be in June now, June 13th, it would be a celebration of life, and I will let everyone know that.
All right, thank you.
But think about that, if, if you'd be willing to name the Fire Hall, the Bruce Boyd Memorial Fire Hall.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? No, no, Counselor Campbell?
I am, I think that's an awesome idea, but I want input from Chief Krieger and the firemen.
Yep.
If they're cool with it, I'm cool with it, but I want to, I don't want to step on their toes, so-
Absolutely.
Solicit their, not that you wouldn't, but make sure that it's cool with them.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Kaufman?
Um, I was cleaning my stuff off, because I knew there was a couple of things that you could shred, and I forgot, we need to make the motion from the-
Oh, yeah.
Executive session.
Yep.
Yes, we do, we do.
Did you make that motion?
Yes, ma'am, I would, thank you, and thank you very much for the light, ma'am.
So in the executive session, we had a discussion to discuss legal advice, and from that, I have a motion to have the city attorney and city staff negotiate an easement at Tax Lot 3615, 3688.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there a second to that motion? Second. Motion has been made, it has been seconded, discussion, question, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passed, the announcement.
Thank you for reading them right back, because tomorrow I will-
Is there anything further, ma'am?
That was it.
All right. I don't have an awful lot, uh, I've got a lot of things going on, but, um, I think something is cute that I do want to share with everybody. I'm on the ORCA board, and, um, it meets, it's out of, it's out of Coos Bay, and, um, I like to think that they like me there, and lo and behold, I was given this by the board chair, chair lady, a little, whatever they call it.
Little police blanket.
Yeah. And on here, this is, uh, ma'am, this is, this is photo work.
And what does it say, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, goodness.
Love Mayor.
Oh, it's my beige!
Love Mayor, Carl Bobb. So anyway, I thought that was kind of cool, and, uh, and I think Margie already knows this, but, uh- And I think Margie already knows this, but I got them to the point where we go around each meeting, you have introductions. And I've got them now, so that when my turn comes up to the introductions, I would just say Carl Plavah, and then they all chime in, beloved Mayor of Gold Beach. That's cool. You got to know how to train. At any rate, I thought that that was pretty darn odd and cool. And so with that in mind, I don't have anything else. And probably a few minutes are that you didn't need either. But we have an opportunity at this time as well to have citizen comments. So if there's anyone out there that would like to say anything, then you've got roughly about three minutes. And if not, then I will, is there anybody? I don't, I'm going to give you a little bit of time. Okay, that's enough time. We, prior to the regular meeting, we did hold an executive session. And the executive session was pursuant to ORS 192, period 660, parentheses 2, parentheses E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the city to negotiate real property transactions. And ORS 192, period 660, parentheses 2, parentheses small L, to consider written advice for our attorney. That's what we were doing prior to you coming in. All right. And effective October 2019, I know that we did it on the second Monday, which in the past has been the traditional Monday for us to hold our city council meetings. But in October, this past October, we voted to change that to the first Monday. This month was a little bit different, because plans were made prior to October. One of them, of course, being the city administrator and the show that she had to attend in Canada. And I think one of the counselors, yeah, Counselor Campbell, had already arranged for a vacation. So that's why we brought him back to the second. But they do, as a rule, unless something comes up, they will be held on the first Monday of each and every month. Therefore, the next one will be held April 6th. And it'll be at 6:30, and it'll be right here. So with that in mind, I will welcome a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. These motions in seconds are some of the fastest that you'll see. I'm not even going to bother with discussion and questions.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. We are dismissed. Thank you all for being here. Carl, thank you for doing this. Chief, thank you so much for keeping us safe, buddy.